As opposed to just exposing, because we all have this program where we think all we have to do is talk about a problem and the morality police are going to come out of the woodwork and fix it. I'd like everybody here to know today that the Citizens Committee for Restructured Government, ccrg.info, charliecharlyromeogolf.info is the website. It'll explain more specifically the issue that I'm about to present, but there is no doubt about it, the Department of Defense is involved. We will also send anybody that requested a copy of a Department of Defense briefing that took place regarding utilizing chemtrails to spray certain viral matter into our environment, which would be absorbed by people to manipulate certain parts of proper functioning of the brain. There are also record numbers of respiratory and health-related issues out there. I'm sure somebody in this room knows somebody that's having some type of sinusitis, bronchitis. It is a reaction, it's an allergic reaction to what's being done to us. They are spraying, there is no doubt about it, DOD is involved, and as I mentioned, I can't stress enough to contact us and request a copy of the Department of Defense briefing that basically they admit, flat out, some very interesting things, as well as, I believe there was an assassin at, you know, present during that briefing, who asks a very interesting question, which is also again depicted in the video. Also, a lot of people here are familiar with something called Project HARP, High Altitude Arural Research Project. The same scientist, Dr. Bernard Eastland, who has certain patent involvement with HARP, also has patent involvement with the elements that are being sprayed in the chemtrails. Also, my question is for people to ponder, is who has the kind of power to allow jet fuel to be infused with aluminum, barium, and other toxic elements and authorized to refuel airplanes with this toxic substance and spray them systematically all over the world? The two countries that are not being hit are Sub-Saharan Africa and China, what a coincidence, is not receiving the amount of chemtrail exposure that the rest of the world is. But is it a fact? Yes. Is it happening? Yes. Are people going to get up here today and present all this evidence and information on how it's being done and all these other things? Yes. Thank you. God bless.
My name is Cynthia McCollus and I'm with Long Island Skywatch. Geoengineering is defined as actions taken to counter the climate effects of greenhouse gas emissions on the atmosphere. Current research is focused on two distinct concepts. The most discussed technique is solar radiation management, which is also known as SRM. SRM releases particles, known as aerosols, into the atmosphere. The purpose is to increase the amount of solar energy or sunlight that is reflected back to space. The second technique alters the reflectivity of clouds by spraying droplets of seawater into the atmosphere to make the clouds brighter. There are many patents that describe how these two concepts are accomplished. In 1990, Use-Air Path Company created the well-stacked seeding patent for the reduction of global warming. The patent describes putting metals like aluminum and barium into jet fuel. Then, water vapor from the jet engine seeds the atmosphere by creating particles that stay afloat to reflect sunlight. Geoengineering would only mask the effects of climate change. In fact, geoengineering adds a greenhouse gas more potent than CO2 to the atmosphere, water vapor. It also does nothing to decrease or prevent rising CO2 and the resulting problems such as ocean acidification. Geoengineering would also significantly increase acid rain. Acid rain reaches aluminum from soil into rivers and streams and damages fish populations by disrupting their reproductive cycle. Acid rain from sulfur, nitrogen, and aluminum greatly impacts highly sensitive forests' ecosystems. It damages forests by draining nutrients from the soil, which causes altered tree growth and dieback. I would advise everyone to start looking at the trees on Long Island. They are in severe decline. A tree bark sample taken from my backyard showed high aluminum, barium, and strontium. Acid rain causes aluminum to be unnaturally released from the soil. As aluminum is the favored metal being proposed by geoengineers due to its low cost, the effects on Long Island forests, farms, and waters is insurmountable. Geoengineering, which also includes weather modification and weather mitigation programs, could decrease rainfall significantly. Decreased rainfall would have a huge agricultural impact on Long Island's farming community, trees, water supplies, and citizens. Geoengineering could also increase rain or snow in one area to the detriment of another. It would reduce the total amount of direct sunlight reaching Earth's surface. All plants, agricultural crops, and trees require direct sunlight for photosynthesis, let alone humans. The decrease in sunlight over the oceans could affect precipitation patterns, leading to crazy weather. Geoengineering would decrease effectiveness of alternative forms of energy such as solar panels due to reductions in direct sunlight or diffuse sunlight. Geoengineering would also increase atmospheric water vapor, a greenhouse gas, and cirrus clouds, which are formed from the trails which are left by the planes. They spread out, block the sun, and turn our sky into a white haze, which is what we get quite frequently on Long Island. Aircraft emissions are responsible for 4% to 8% of global warming since air temperature records began in 1850. So the panacea they are proposing is actually causing what they are purporting to fix. It doesn't compute. Aircraft are considered the most economical way to disperse atmospheric aerosols into the atmosphere. However, rockets are used all the time. In 2009, the U.S. Navy and NASA dispersed an aluminum oxide dust cloud using a rocket over the east coast of the United States. Where was their environmental impact statement or public oversight? Geoengineering also raises particularly difficult national security issues because it could help some regions while harming others. All studies show that once begun, it cannot be stopped without creating harmful sudden increases in global temperature. Who decides when and where to geoengineer? Why is there no public consent to our government dropping aluminum, barium, silver iodide, or other aerosols into the air debris? As a teacher for 16 years, I have watched disabilities rise among my students exponentially. 10 years ago, autism was one out of every 10,000 children. Now it affects 1 in 70 boys. Allergies are no longer seasonal. They last all year and they develop at any age. Nearly everyone you know has a child with a disability. Asthma is an epidemic. Respiratory illness is the third leading cause of death. It has moved up from seven in the last six years. Something is causing this.
You're out of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is pronounced Siobhan Cerisi. I am here representing Long Island Skywatch. My question is, do we want our Earth and atmosphere to remain intact as a life support system, or do we want it to be a physics laboratory for military and private interests? Complete with global dimming due to sunlight reduction, soil pH changes, increasing water and air pollution, reduced vitamin D production, human health decline...
Siobhan, I gotta interrupt you. The signs have to disappear.
Okay. Okay. Those are...this is not cutting into my time right now, is it?
Yes, your clock is running.
Okay. Well, I got an extra 30 seconds. Okay, so, lower crop production, dead and dying trees, photosynthesis problems, and the list goes on. This is the choice we are faced with as humans, and modifying the atmosphere and weather intentionally through geoengineering and unintentionally through aviation and pollution. I am here today in support of IR 2029, a local law to protect air quality in Suffolk County, which places restrictions on the intentional dispersment of barium, sulfur, salts, and aluminum oxide into the air. These chemicals listed in Mr. Romaine's proposal are currently being promoted for geoengineering solar radiation management schemes on a global level and are referred to in numerous United States patents for weather modification technologies and methods dating as far back as the 1930s. What is geoengineering? According to the 2009 Royal Society report titled "Geoengineering: Science, Governance, and Uncertainty," it is the "deliberate large-scale manipulation of the planetary environment to counteract anthropogenic climate change." Geoengineering proposals aim to intervene in the climate system by deliberately modifying the Earth's energy balance. End quote. Geoengineering, also referred to as climate remediation, weather modification, and solar radiation management, is already underway in the United States, according to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, the United States Navy, and NASA, and several other countries, including Germany, India, Russia, and the UK, who are exploring or "moving ahead" with their own climate remediation efforts, according to the 2011 Bipartisan Policy Center's Task Force on Climate Remediation. Between 2009 and 2010, the U.S. House Committee on Science and Technology held hearings discussing the implications of large-scale climate intervention, the scientific basis and engineering challenges, and domestic and international research governance. These are the titles of their meetings. As discussions about geoengineering have already taken place at the federal level of government, likewise, this reality needs to be discussed by the local levels of government and public hearings made available. Being that geoengineering affects the planetary climate and weather patterns, the public at the local levels must have the ability to accept or reject such experiments and programs in their own communities. According to John Holdren, Director of the White House Office of Science and Technology Policy, "There are a variety of schemes that have been discussed for geoengineering. A classic example is injecting reflecting particles into Earth orbit." End quote. It is these programs which I will be addressing today. Solar radiation management, or SRM, involves deliberately injecting particles, chemicals, or gases into our upper atmosphere to decrease the amount of direct sunlight reaching the Earth to mask or reverse the effects of climate change. These schemes include cloud whitening experiments using salts and other particulates, injecting metal oxides into the atmosphere, and putting more water vapor, a potent greenhouse gas, into the atmosphere to create man-made artificial clouds. SRM models include stratospheric sulfate injections and the spraying of 10 to 20 million tons of aluminum oxide and other aerosols into our atmosphere for the stated goal of cooling the planet, as documented at the American Association for the Advancement of Science Conference in 2010. According to the Bipartisan Task Force on Climate Remediation Research, "Although SRM may be able to mask some impacts of greenhouse gases on the climate system, it would do nothing to deal with the chemical consequences of increased CO2 concentration of the atmosphere." End quote. This can be likened to suppressing symptoms of an illness while not addressing the root causes. Thus, the system remains sick, but the illusion of wellness is what we get. Simultaneously, we are in the midst of a global dimming. In 2003, NASA scientists reported that the Earth is 20% darker. A report issued by the International Osteoporosis Foundation in 2009 showed that populations across the globe are suffering from the impact of low levels of vitamin D. The problem is widespread and on the increase, with potentially severe repercussions for overall health and fracture rates. Aluminum is a noro-toxin in humans. Prolonged exposure can impair cognitive function and lead to motor dysfunction. Barium salts are very toxic, and if ingested, have a strong stimulating effect on all muscles, including the heart. Excessive barium poisoning can lead to vomiting, diarrhea, convulsive tremors, and increased blood pressure, according to the EPA. According to our own New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, high concentrations of sulfates can enter the cardiovascular respiratory systems, resulting in disease or even death, and leach metals from soils in the form of acid rain. Ultimately, geoengineering affects all of us, and thus, information needs to be made widely available to the public, and programs voted on by the public before the implementation of any such schemes. Thank you.
Our blue skies are no longer the deep blue of our youth. It is usually crossing trails that go in directions that are against FAA standard flight plans. I have called the FAA and Homeland Security numerous times, only to be told it's not their jurisdiction. As you can see from the cover of Packet 2, the trails are now being put into media, books, video games, movies, and always behind the weathermen on the news. These trails have become normal to everyone, especially our children. To make sure of this, NASA has implemented a Count the Con Trail program in the 1980s, which was distributed to the elementary schools in the United States. In this way, children grew up thinking these trails were normal. There are patents to make different kinds of clouds on the books. The clouds we see today do not fall in the previous classifications. In fact, NASA made new classifications for clouds last year. United Nations implemented a ban on geoengineering in 2010. 190 nations agreed, except for the United States and the United Kingdom. Congress has had three meetings on geoengineering in 2010. The Council of Foreign Relations, which is a private entity, sponsored a meeting on unilateral geoengineering in 2008. The U.S. Senate bill was introduced in 2009 titled "Weather Mitigation: Research and Development Policy Authorization Act." A weather mitigation bill has been introduced every year since 2005. In 2009, the United Kingdom Royal Society put forth a study titled "Geoengineering the Climate: Science, Governance, and Uncertainty." The Parliamentary Office of Science and Technology had a meeting on geoengineering research in 2009. Just last week, a United Nations climate conference in South Africa on Friday said that in theory, reflecting a small amount of sunlight back into space before it strikes the Earth's surface would have an immediate and dramatic effect, but nobody knows what the side effects would be, and they could unintentionally change weather patterns and rainfall. There continue to be many meetings sponsored by corporations that stand to gain from geoengineering. There was the Asilomar Conference in 2009 about strategies, monies, and governance of climate intervention. The meeting consisted of only corporations. There are currently 69 weather modification programs in the United States with no oversight. A weather form could be submitted to NOAA by localities. Texas has a weather modification law, number 301, on the books. The requirement to obtain a license to implement weather modification is pay the license fee and demonstrate to the satisfaction of the department competence in the field of meteorology to engage in weather modification and control activities. Many countries around the world have weather modification programs. There is no control or oversight anywhere. In September of this year, the United Kingdom was going to simulate an artificial volcano by releasing sulfur into the atmosphere through a balloon-type contraption. This is just one experiment that was made public. It was halted due to public reaction. What about the other experiments that the public is unaware of? Weather modification corporations are now a multi-billion-dollar business. They're on the web. One such company is called Weather Modification Incorporated, and its motto is "Some people see clouds; we see potential." Another company would be JustClouds.com. Weather derivatives have turned into, have turned weather into a tradable commodity since 1997. It is an eight-billion-dollar-a-year business. Monsanto has created aluminum-resistant crops. Unless our plant...why would they need to...why would they have a need for aluminum-resistant crops unless our plants can't grow due to the increase of aluminum in our soil? There are calls once again to globally ban geoengineering at the United Nations Conference in June 2012. This is not enough. Over the last few years, we've seen record rain and snowfalls, droughts, heat waves, tornadoes, and hurricanes, just on Long Island alone. All of these weather anomalies mimic the consequences of the geoengineering schemes that are being proposed by governments and corporations. The true question is, who stands to profit by blaming these weather anomalies on global warming? Certainly, it is not Long Island. The true cause of climate change is being engineered right above our heads. Thank you for your time.
On deck is Theo Falloris.
I'm a resident of Huntington. I've been living in Suffolk County for the last six...2002. And as far as the spraying, I didn't even, wasn't aware of the spraying until someone pointed it out to me about five years ago. He said, "Look in the sky," and since I think they pointed out the trails. I see them every day. My concern is, they're spraying them up at about 30,000 feet. Whoever is spraying them is not being, they're not responsible and they're not accountable for the, where they're falling and the consequences to us are...there are basically four different consequences. One is economic consequences. Decreased sunlight means less healthy crops, trees are dying, vegetation is not as healthy, and there's less production for crops. That's one of the economic consequences. The second economic consequence is decreased energy for solar panels. And the next consequence is health. Levels of vitamin D are decreasing. Vitamin D is essential for your health. And unknown consequences, which the three people that we're very knowledgeable with just spoke about, aluminum barium, and heavy metal salts. No one's filed an environmental impact statement, so how do we know what the impact is on our health? The third issue is global warming, which actually is controversial because we're not sure it even exists, because if you have these aluminum particles that are being sprayed in the air, they deflect the sun. So what happens is, the sun is not, the right amount of sun is not hitting the Earth, and then the heat is getting trapped. So it's actually being, global warming is actually a man-made concept. We really need to pass this legislation. It's, everyone should take a look up at the sky and educate themselves. There's a lot of research being done on this. And the, they should file an environmental impact statement and prove that they're safe before they continue to spray. Your children, they're, everyone here, if you have children, if you have pets, if you have, you're own health yourself, it's, you're, you're responsible for safeguarding your health. And it's not being safeguarded. There's no environmental impact statement, there's no, no one keeping track of the impact on your health from the spraying, and it's being done every single day. And the last issue is, is it a constitutional issue? How can it be constitutional to spray, spray, do aerial spraying and drop heavy metals when it's actually taking your property? It's taking your liberty. It's taking your right to happiness. I'm a lawyer by trade, and that's what I've been doing for 20 years. So if anyone needs any legal research, I'm giving it to you for free on this issue, because this to me is the most important issue in the world, facing every one of you. Your life depends upon it. Take it seriously, please. I, I, I've written letters to senators, congressmen. This to me is the most important issue for all of you, for your health, for your children. And that's it.
Go ahead, see you.
Hi, I'm Mr. Hampton. My daily experience when I drive around and I go to Montauk, Southampton, is that when airplanes, they enter Montauk, they turn off, the aerosol spray, and they spray up to Southampton, and then they stop. And the patterns that I see, they are cross x's, and the spray is heavy and goes on every day. Several years ago, I was walking with a friend of mine about a mile in the morning, every morning, and I witnessed very heavy spraying that month of January. And I got scared, and I didn't walk anymore. But my friend continued walking. This person has a very robust health. She's a very strong and healthy person. She came down with a case of persistent bronchitis for two months, she couldn't say it, with antibiotics or anything. So there is no absolute proof there, but there is evidence that there is something bad happening there. And also, I would like to say that men can live without food for about 60 days, without water for about 12 days, but without air, he can live five minutes. Unfortunately, as a migrant, I came 40 years ago in this country because I believed in the ideals of this country. And now I see that we have turned everything upside down, and it's a grotesque example of what used to be the United States.
You're asking, I want to open up with my favorite bumper sticker skates. If you're not pissed, then you're not paying attention. That is true, so true. For those who don't believe, I want to describe what has happened. This, by the way, started about 20 years ago, but today, it can't go unnoticed. I would like to ask everyone to just look up, pay attention to the skies in the morning, throughout the day, and into the evening. On certain days, you will notice, nothing but other days, you will see these planes that are at least 33,000 feet up in the air. Sometimes you might see more than one of these planes in the sky at once. In 2006, my wife and I noticed four or five planes flying east to west from our first home in Riverhead. My wife and I see, as they were flying, that they started the persistent contrails and stopped it when they wanted, because the planes would still be in the same elevation, but no persistent contrails. That was just very disturbing. I had called my senators, congressmen, and U.S. Health Department. You will notice that this persistent contrail that goes from one horizon to the other, sometimes they are short, sometimes they are behind clouds. They sometimes create x's and other times they grid like patterns. They eventually expand throughout the day by covering this whole sky, which then looked like cirrus clouds. Cirrus clouds appear to be white, light gray in color. They form when water vapor undergoes deposition at altitudes of 16,500 feet in temperate regions and above 20,000 feet in tropical regions, which is why they are not cirrus clouds. I know when, I was growing up as a kid, there was no such thing, what I call "sky graffiti" or "sky pollution." There are these nano-particles of aluminum, barium, and strontium falling from the skies because people are finding extreme high levels in ponds, lakes, and soil. My family has found that we have high aluminum when we were tested for heavy metals. My wife and I had 11. My children had a 10, but the CDC says that the safe range is 0 through 9. When I had the chelation done, which is a process that can go through to remove heavy metals, which is expensive, because medical insurance doesn't cover, my numbers went up instead of going down. That's because the aluminum was pulled out of the fatty tissues or the cells where it was stored. What is really scary, could they be dropping anything else upon us? There is a disease called Morgellons, which came out in the 90s, and there is documentation out there that explains that in depth. It's believed that synthetic polymer fibers that are being dropped, which are catalyzed by the metals in the air. A.C. Griffith was an associate within the NSA, and he carried top-secret clearance and a cryptographic clearance. In his more recent times, he's associated with CIA operations. On May 14, 2007, he was interviewed on a program called The Power Hour. He stated that Wright-Patterson Air Force Base was where it had been managed. "We know that the people have died over this program," he said. And one of the key people that designed aerosol, barium-sulfate aerosol, was set up by people in the Reagan administration, and he is now sitting in a federal penitentiary. They are still going to him to ask him questions, but yet, he is still in prison. That is a little unnerving, isn't it? That the man that has designed the barium-sulfate aerosol is still sitting in prison? The trails, white trails that are not coming out of the engines, it's coming out of aerosol units on the aircraft. The name of the project is Project Cloverleaf, and in the air industry, it's very secretive. Project Cloverleaf was initiated to allow commercial airlines to assist in the releasing of these chemicals into the atmosphere. Airlines companies in America have been participating in something called Project Cloverleaf for some years now. In 1998, 1999, airline employees have been being briefed on it. A few airline employees who were briefed on the Project Cloverleaf were all made to undergo background checks, and before they were briefed on it, they were made to sign on nondisclosure agreements, which basically state that if they were to tell anyone, they would know they would be imprisoned. My final statement, everyone needs to wake up, start paying attention. There is more to the persistent contrails than the public knows. The military has lots of reasons, especially scalar weapons, and they don't want the public to know. So the best way to convince the public nothing out of the ordinary is to tell them the people are conspiracy theorists. As time goes on, and it's, it's going to be harder for them to hide the truth. Thank you very much, and thank you for everybody coming.
First, I want to congratulate this body for having this hearing, and Legislature Romaine for introducing this bill. Looking at Occupy Wall Street, we find that the people are finally speaking up to things that we know are wrong. We have bills in local communities to get rid of corporate personhood. Because this is the only way that we, that the people are going to have a voice, is to start at the grassroots in our towns and appeal to our local legislature. and appeal to our local legislators to do something about terrible problems like this geoengineering. I'm a photographer and a gardener. And I, both advocations are suffering because of geoengineering. It used to be out here the light, because the South Pole is known for its light. The beautiful, beautiful, clear light. Well, that clear light is gone. All we have is haze. We'll have a beautiful day, and the geoengineering will start. You'll see the trails in the sky, and then the afternoon noon looks like it does today. And Long Island is also known for its agriculture, where I believe the first or second biggest agricultural county in the state. The obvious loss of sunlight is affecting the agriculture. I know in my own garden, my crops are diminishing year after year. Our health is being ruined. We don't know what's in the trails. And I appeal to our legislators to ask some questions for us. Where are the planes coming from? Are they coming from Gabriski? Are they coming from another state? Who's ordering them? We need to know. We deserve to know. Our health and the viability of this county is at stake. And we people will prevail.
Followed by John Zito.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And thank you, Ed Romano. I don't know what this woman said. This legislation is very important that has been brought forth. So please help us stop the chemical spraying and support this ban. The people of New York need to demand a public investigation of the chemical spraying that's going on right here in our backyard. Introduce a legislation to create a no-chemical-spraying zone here in New York, Long Island. We need to give immunity and protection to anyone willing to come forward to blow the whistle on this chemtrail operation. We need to boycott the products and any companies who produce the chemical-related products. Identify those who are responsible for allowing us to be sprayed, our city, our county, our state, as well as the global level. We need to demand that each city be given any 72-hour warning before spraying, say, for a West Nile virus or something like that. That day should be given notice, which I think they have. We need to demand an explanation for the chemical spraying. And we need to prosecute anyone, anyone who continues to aid these illegal chemical operations and hold those companies responsible that produce the toxic chemicals and metals and biological toxins and any other submicron particles that may cause chemical-related diseases that affect the general population. Ladies and gentlemen, we all have families here and children. And like was just said, this has to be done at the local level. This will be the first ban of chemical trail spraying, chemical trail spraying in the United States. So this is essential, that you act and support the ban that Ed Romano has courageously stepped forward with. So I ask you all, please, in your conscience, pray to your God or your gods, and direct you, and help keep us free from this tyranny. My friends, thank you for your time.
John Zito followed by Janice Barcello.
Good afternoon, everybody. And I wanted to say thank you very much for giving me your attention. I'm not going to speak long. I know you folks are listening to a lot of stuff up here. And a lot of it maybe do, a lot of it maybe not. I have six children. In this day and age, that's an anomaly all of itself. And I can imagine their lives in the future. I believe they've been gifted to me. Just let me say that, I don't do this very often, and I'm amused at the number of people that aren't actually paying attention.
Mr. Zito, address the audience, don't cheer them up, right? You're about the 12th speaker on this subject, so please continue with your presentation.
I say that with all due respect. I can imagine their lives in the future. And I know that you folks have children and relations. There are challenges. We have systematic breakdowns that are happening. But without getting too much fear base into it, I can imagine for you standing here, sitting here, listening to us all talk, that reaching up 30,000 feet and identifying yourselves with something that's happening way up there, it can be a little daunting. The good thing is that there's actually been a lot of research done. And at this point, we are pretty clear that there are chemicals being used that are really deadly. The scientists are good, I'll give them that. They can make an amazing amount of things happen up in the stratosphere. Listen, if they're trading snowfall on the stock exchange, they better be good. Aluminum is highly deadly. Mount Shasta, previously known as pristine, about as pristine a region in the United States as we get. 61,000 parts per million aluminum in the soil in the last five years. 61,000. The government has said, the federal government has said, that 1,000 parts per million is a toxic ceiling. That's 61 times. There's enough video clips and audio clips and media print on record at this time that I don't think there's an argument whether or not this is happening. We know it's happening. It's no longer trying to convince people that those go, or don't go, or stay, or whatever they do. The question now is that every time officials are petitioned, from the federal government to the state level, there has been denial. I traveled from Hartford, Connecticut to come here because this is the first time that I've been able to address a group of officials. I will listen. And I'm so grateful. So we've been denied from the top down. I beg that each of you consider the constituency that you represent. And man, you are in a tough place because there's a lot of really outspoken mavens in this audience. I beg that you consider just the facts. All the other stuff, just set aside and just listen to the facts. If you don't have them, I can make them available to you. Or probably anybody here. Listen to what those facts are and make a decision so that a precedent is set so we can start to move forward.
... on Long Island. And this is an issue I've done a lot of research on. I would just like to respectfully request that you think about your families, your friends. This is not a Republican issue. This is not a Democrat issue. This is an issue of the general welfare of the American people. We had an 85-year-old woman stripped searched by the TSA at JFK Airport last week. And we have no idea who is spraying us with what. We have an idea with what, but we don't have any idea really who is flying these planes. And the average law-abiding citizen can't even get on a plane without being harassed. This is insanity. The science behind the argument is sound. Anybody with a functioning set of eyes, a critical thinking process that has spent any significant amount of time reviewing this evidence could see it as sound. And it's clearly the will of the people that's educated on this matter, that an end is put to this. Please give us the unanimous decision to pass this bill so that we can show the world that America's taking freedom back and we're not going to be sprayed like a bunch of bugs. I know there's a lot of other speakers, so I would like the rest of the time to be preserved for them. Thank you.
Followed by Greg Fisher.
Hello, I'm Pauline Cantwell from Greenwich, Connecticut. And I came out today because I have been concerned about this issue for many years. I have worked at the UN since 94, the UN Peace Caucus there, and getting involved in the weaponization of weather, weather as a weapon, and got interested in the geoengineering issue, which has been covered by the UN for a long time. In fact, they passed a convention banning the hostile manipulation of weather in 1978. I have five grandchildren on Long Island and children living here. I'm concerned about their health. I'm concerned about the health of people all over the world. I started doing a radio show in Greenwich, Memorial Day of last year. My theme song is "Blue Skies" by Willie Nelson. And I want my blue skies back. I want to wake up and see the blue skies when I get up. And I want to see them when I see the sunset at night. I'm tired of seeing the desert sunsets in Greenwich, Connecticut, who shouldn't be having bright red sunsets in Greenwich. I was in Texas early November. I met with George Bomar, who heads up the weather modification program there. I had him on my radio show November 15th. November 22nd, I talked about some of it on November 15th. Those shows are archived at www.wgch.com. We talked about a program in Mexico by a Russian weather modification company, Elot Technologies, doing ionization of weather, doing rain enhancement and precipitation denial. And we talked about military corporations, Sky Blue, who came to Texas and got a permit. They said they were former military. They got a permit to alter the weather using laser technology. And then they disappeared this year. They can't be found. And the only thing we can find is Sky Blue, which is a space technology corporation in Colorado. I went to the Bonn Conference in Germany and distributed Rosalind Peterson flyers. I have Rosalind Peterson California Sky Watch on my show almost every week. And I distributed these geoengineering flyers. Octopus on one side strangling the earth, and the scientist on the other side saying, "Just trust us, we're going to put all these chemicals up, and it's going to be okay." And it shows the CARE rocket, C-A-R-E, Charged Aerosol Released Experiment. That rocket went over my house in Greenwich September 9th, 19, two years ago, 19th, September 19th. My next-door neighbor thought it was a UFO. It was spraying aluminum oxide. And was seen by a cruise ship, maybe somebody who saw it go over your house. It was launched from Wall of Island, Virginia, to create nascent clouds. These are being done deliberately. I was taken out of the conference, told I couldn't distribute this flyer anymore. It wasn't authorized. And then I was told the next day it was a case of mistaken identity. It was no case of mistaken identity because I brought Rosalind as keynote speaker in '07 at the Climate Change Conference. And we did a program on geoengineering, weather warfare, and all these issues. And they know what I'm talking about, and they didn't want it discussed. So I applaud all the people here. I am so impressed. I have been a lone person in the wilderness at these conferences. And I am really impressed by people's knowledge and their concern that there is a history of military spraying diseases on people. You can check out the book "Clouds of Secrecy" by Leonard Cole about programs they did in the 70s. It's not new. And this stuff is going on all over the world. When I was in Germany, we went to Zupspitz, the highest point in Germany. And I videotaped planes spraying jet contrails. I call them jet contrails, persistent jet contrails that create clouds because the Air Force calls chemtrails a conspiracy. And I don't want to get put in the hemp of conspiracy because I deal in facts. When I do a speech, I want to make sure that my facts are right. So thank you so much. And I have a letter that lists a lot of the things I'm concerned about and want to congratulate you for what you're doing. And I hope you do carry it further. And I hope we can spread this into Connecticut, into Texas, into all of the United States and get awareness of what's really being done. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Greg Fisher. I'm here in my role as the Director for Americans for Legal Reform. My point is really short. I'm going to put a material safety data sheet into the record for aluminum oxide. Aluminum oxide is a known skin-and-eye irritant. She's speaking up right there. We're going to be spraying irritants into our airspace. Also, it's worse than that. Actually, I'm going to also submit a study from the American Thoracic Association, which links aluminum oxide particulates to pulmonary fibrosis. Just in short, I incorporate what prior speakers said. There is significant health risk from inhaling aluminum compounds. And Americans for Legal Reform supports this legislation wholeheartedly. Thank you.
This piece of legislation is absolutely necessary. And it is also necessary that we not forget the Constitution. And in the Constitution, it does mention promoting the general welfare. And this is in violation of that with all of the spraying that's going on. Also, we have to keep in mind the 10th Amendment of the Constitution, which says that all power is not given to the federal government of the state, resides with the states and the people. And the 10th Amendment has not been used enough. And I would want New York State to do more of what Arizona and Texas has already done. And that is to claim state sovereignty over those powers that are clearly in the Constitution. What we have now is that the Constitution itself seems to be something that the federal government sees as inconvenient. Let's take a look at the Fourth Amendment. And when you look at the Fourth Amendment, it's being eviscerated by Homeland Security. So when I speak about spraying, I do want to remind you that if somebody's a little too articulate and has too many facts, they can be deemed an enemy of the state where there is no evidence of violence, threat of violence, or desire of violence. But somebody who might get in the way of either the military or corporate profits in the public interest of health. Now, I would like for you to keep in mind that when you take a look at the name of chemical compounds, keep in mind three metals and three non-metals. The three metals is you have aluminum... The three metals is you have aluminum, barium, and strontium. Now, when it comes to the non-metals, you're going to have the, you're going to have the sulfides, the chlorides, and the fluorides, the chlorides, the sulfides. Now, the thing is that you can have an enormous number of chemical compounds that has any one or more of those, but the result is, and I brought in the evidence here, if you ever want copies, it's fine, one of them deals with carcinogens raising the cancer rates, and the other one deals with lowering the fertility rates. The way the fertility rates have been lowered, and it was first discovered with frogs, and then it started to show up in terms of statistics involving people, is that first there's the obvious one, our lower sperm counts, but then was something less obvious, and that was the issue of women's eggs not being receptive. And that is where, well, what is normal is that the first sperm is accepted and all others are rejected, but the first sperm is now being rejected as all other sperm, and this means infertility inflicted on the woman, and what you find is that this coincides with higher rates of having chemical compounds ending up in the air and then percolating down into the ground every time it rains, into the aquifer. And therefore, it mixes with drinking water, so you're either breathing it or you're ingesting it. And what are the, what are the three items? You have aluminum, you have barium and strontium, then you have, on the non-metals side, you have chlorination, the fluorination, and the sulfides. And when you put all that together, we are having virtually a chemical attack on us by our own government. And why would they do that? There's a number of reasons. First, where people on their deathbed have then, have let things out because they didn't like holding in what they had to, signing these confidentiality agreements. And these are not confidentiality agreements, confidentiality agreements in order to protect the name of our agents overseas, and I want to keep secrecy of our names of our agents overseas until they get home. So what we're talking about here is secrecy over what is done that affects health. So the military not knowing the health consequences is using us as guinea pigs. Then you have something else. You have contracts between the government and private industry, and if it's good for corporate profits and dangerous for our health, what happens? We see what happens.
Followed by Christine McKay.
Good afternoon, I'll be brief, because I'd like to thank Legislative Romaine for bringing this vital issue into the light. My name is Perry Finkelstein, I stand here and represent myself, as well as the voices of my children, and I'd like to say my potential future grandchildren, but I don't even know if that's going to happen because of, our health and well-being is being threatened in this very moment. This is a, this is a global issue, it's not just happening here, I mean, a lot of evidence has been presented, it's indisputable, and, you know, everyone here, it's not, it's not us versus you. We all breathe the same air, we all drink the same water, our children play in the same playgrounds, and this is an opportunity for you esteemed folks to make a, make this date, a date that everyone remembers, not just here, not just another hearing day in Suffolk County. We are Suffolk County, Long Island, New York, and this could be a stand that goes global, and it could make a huge difference. This is happening. This is, there's no debate, this is happening. We are being poisoned, we're being killed, we're being exterminated. It's happening, okay? There's no dispute. So we're all part of the same community here, it's not us versus you guys, it's not, you know, so, so, you know, I'm asking here for my children, for your children, for future generations, to look at this and to make a stand and to make right what needs to be done. You know, I sit and watch up for decades already, I could watch a beautiful, clear blue sky go from a beautiful sunny sky to hazy, toxic pollutants, you know, and I feel it, I sense it, I know it. So there has been no accountability, there's been no transparency, and it needs to happen, it needs to happen now. We don't have time, we are running out of time. It's the 1% that is making these decisions, okay? So look at your children, look at your ancestors, yourself, okay? Look up in the skies, it's no joke. So the Shshindi people of this country, also known as the Apache, have a saying, "Kadiste", that means "all is made beautiful", so I implore you, okay? Let's make it beautiful again. We have the power, you have the power, please.
Christine McKay followed by John Martell. Christine McKay. Oh, Christine McKay, how about John Martell?
I'd like to thank the legislature today for hearing the public, and I'm going to get into the definition of what you might not be familiar with, what is a chemtrail and what is a contrail. I don't expect you to be familiar with this, we are well-rehearsed, we have researched this, so I'll make it very simple and very clear. When you see a plane in the sky and it leaves a contrail, C-O-N-T-R-A-I-L, that is the exhaust from the plane, that exhaust dissipates in about 15 minutes. When you see a chemical trail, that trail does not dissipate in 15 minutes. If you watch that trail, it becomes more defined, and if you continue to watch that trail, it will overlap and twist in on itself, and then within an hour or two hours, it will expand across the horizon, and within due time, those toxins will float down to the earth and contaminate the earth. I'd like to bring your attention to the date of February 20 of 2010, an event that took place in San Diego. The American Association for the Advancement of Science had a meeting regarding geoengineering. During that meeting, a person from the audience, a concerned person who was well aware of chemtrails and their toxins, had asked David Keith, who was a proponent and a supporter and an advocate of geoengineering, a very important question. The millions of tons of toxic barium and aluminum that's being dumped into the atmosphere that transcends down to the earth, he asked David Keith if this is at all a threat to humankind, and I'm going to quote for you exactly what David Keith, a proponent and supporter and advocate of geoengineering, said on February 20 of 2010, and I quote, "We haven't done anything serious on alumina, and there could be something terrible that we find tomorrow that we have not looked at." Quote-unquote.